Ready? Okay, here we go. We're back with committee of the whole. We have four or five items. The first item is a briefing on the update to the city's critical area ordinance. Good Rick?
Members of the council, I'm Rick Sevler, Planning and Community Development Director. I'm joined by my colleagues Steve Sundin and Kim Wheel. Today we come before you to update you on one component of the periodic updates as required by the Growth Management Act. As councilors recall, there were four things that were mandated by the state for us to address by June of 16, and that is to update any regulations that need updating consistent with GMA, change regulations since we adopted our conference of plan, to address mineral lands of staff's favorites since we have none of record, we're completed on that, to review the urban growth areas and population projections, and as councilors recall, that process is well underway, and finally, to review and update if necessary the critical area ordinance to ensure that incorporates best available science. Somewhat unique in the sense that the critical area ordinance isn't implementing regulation and not directly part of the conference of plan, it fully implements what's in the plan, the policy base, and as such, is advancing before you on a separate track. We're here tonight because on November 9th, we've noticed a public hearing to review comments on the planning commission's recommendation on that ordinance, and as you'll note from a review of your packet, we haven't included that ordinance for you today. We're not here to discuss it. More so today is to set the stage, to give you the background on the process to date, to identify the issues we've encountered as part of the review, so that when you do hear testimony and review the draft ordinance, there's context given. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues who will walk you through the process to date.
Thank you, Rick. Good afternoon, council members. Steve Sundin, Planning Department. As Rick said, we do have a public hearing scheduled for November 9th, so we're looking forward to that. We're looking forward to presenting what we think is a solid piece of work, a solid document, one that's compliant with substantive and procedural requirements, and most importantly, we're excited because we're anxious to get to using the changes that we've proposed to that document because we feel like it's a very good improvement. I would also mention that there are materials available on our critical area ordinance webpage. So when the notice went out, we told people that there's a proposed changes and track change and a clean copy that are both available of the CAO. They're both available on that webpage. What we're going to do today is talk about really kind of five topic areas that we feel like you should be mindful of or kind of have in your hip pocket as you begin fielding questions from folks. The scope, the public process, touch a little bit on the comp plan update that's ongoing, tell you just a little bit about the county's update to their CAO, and then we'll get into just slightly more detail talking about habitat protection, no net loss, best available science. Those are all sort of buzzwords that people use in various ways, and so we want to tell you what we think we mean by those phrases and how it's been applied in our update. Scope, this project's been going on for quite some time. We have been at this since about May or June of last year, and we, after having driven the CAO for about 10 years, it is in time for some maintenance. And so we've identified state required mandates that are, need to be incorporated into the program. There's clarifications on language that didn't make sense when we had to apply them, and there are certain efficiencies that we want to realize in applying the CAO. That comes more in terms of administering permits and such, but those are the areas that we felt like it was important to update in order to make the document work better and be applied better, easier to understand. Public process, as I said, we've been at this for about a year and a half. We put together three focus groups at our discretion. We're allowed to use our discretion in terms of how we reach out to individuals or to parties, et cetera. And so we formed three focus groups. One was specific to geologists, one was specific to wetlands, and then another one was specific to people who use the CAO with regularity, land use consultants, some of our own staff who have to get critical area permits for projects. And we worked with them several times each before we got to the point where then we were into noticing and going through the full legislative process, which began in January. We held a public hearing with the planning commission. Number of issues were raised. We felt like we have responded to those, most notably Department of Ecology and Futurewise brought up a couple issues that between January and June, we met with them face to face. We went over their concerns. We proposed changes that we felt addressed those concerns that they raised, and they were in agreement when we were done with that side project that those concerns were addressed. We presented those in June to the planning commission at a work session and characterized it as such, as I just explained, and they said, okay, this looks like it does in fact respond to those concerns. And in August, we held a final public hearing, and in the final public hearing, they made a motion to then move it to the next stage, which is in front of you folks in November. We also, throughout that process, we also issued, reissued a SEPA. We had done a SEPA comment period initially, which was extended. Then we entered the public process. When we made changes that addressed DOE and Futurewise concerns, we reissued SEPA so people had another opportunity to look at what we had added to our changes. Comp plan update, this, Rick touched on this slightly. I just wanted to-
Hold it. Go ahead, Terry.
When you listed the three focus groups, I didn't hear what the second one was.
We had a group specific to wetland specialists or wetland biologists.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick note on the comp plan update. It's okay to amend implementing regulations at the same time you do your comp plan update. The county's doing the exact same thing. It's our responsibility. It's our requirement to make sure that those things are mutually consistent with one another. You're probably aware that we're about to or have been working on the ADU ordinance and the subdivision ordinance also. So it's okay to move those things down parallel tracks. We have to be done with all those efforts by June of next year, and that's what we're working on. The county, the county is also updating their CAO. They're trying to get their comp plan straightened out and some of their implementing regs. The CAO is one of those. Their scope is very similar to ours in that they were trying to incorporate updates. They were trying to clarify unclear language, and they were trying to realize some efficiencies in the way they do the actual business of critical areas. They have, at their discretion, they have formed a citizen advisory committee and a technical advisory committee. Those processes are ongoing. They have a slightly different set of issues. They're dealing with agricultural lands, significant flood-prone areas, but nonetheless, it was their, it was their focus or their intention to create a citizen group and a technical group to help them work through those issues. They intend to start their public process before the planning commission, probably right after the start of the year. We've been in contact with staff that's managing that effort, just so that we understand what each other is doing. Kim is going to talk about some of the more specific things having to do with no net loss, best available science, habitat protection, and then we'll have time for questions if you have those when we're finished.
Go ahead, Kim.
Good afternoon. I'm Kim Wheel with the City Planning Department. And as Steve mentioned, we sat down with groups and incorporated a lot of comments we heard through this last year in this public process. There's three, at least three issues that you'll probably hear about again as you start to hear us and our presentation on the CAO update. And I'll call it the CAO. It's a little easier to say. One of those is that there's a federal and a state policy of no net loss of wetland functions. And what we heard and what you might hear is that we can't know if we are meeting that federal policy if we didn't do a baseline assessment of functions when we adopted the CAO and we don't do it now. So in other words, we don't know how we're doing. There is no requirement, federal or state requirement, to do that, but Department of Ecology recognizes that local jurisdictions, cities and counties don't have resources to do that kind of assessment. So they provide a lot to us. They provide our best available science and publications which help us do our updates. They provide model ordinances. They provide training. And all of this is too geared at no net loss of wetland function. So that concept is embodied in the regulations that we're adopting. A good example is the wetland rating system that we're adopting, the new wetland rating system, and it considers not just the site-specific impacts, but it also considers the landscape approach, if you've heard of that. So it's bigger scale. We also map all of our wetlands. We have wetland inventories in the city and in our UGA areas and beyond, and we map all wetland delineations. So we have a good set of information, on-the-ground information. We have great guidance based on best available science, and we do require monitoring and maintenance of every single wetland mitigation project that we review. Another issue is fragmentation, excuse me, habitat fragmentation and habitat connectivity loss. And these things happen in urbanizing environments, but our CAO regulates habitat. They're called habitat conservation areas, and these range from everything from listed species, federal and state listed species, to quote, "lands that connect habitat blocks," unquote. In other words, we regulate a lot of habitat, and we were able to do that in 2005 when we adopted this set of codes. We know a lot more about those habitat blocks because of a city and consultants developed recently the Habitat Restoration Technical Assessment, and it's, I understand, a final draft now. So not final, but not quite draft. And we've, the data has been collected and it's been analyzed, and it is really a great assessment of ecosystem functions, including wetlands. There were four functional groups: wetlands, forests, meadows, and riverine systems. So we have a lot of information from that that will help us prioritize restoration and protection. In addition to protection and restoration of habitat, we also have other tools the city uses, as you know, the Greenways Program and Open Space Dedications that both have an eye on habitat connectivity. And then a third issue that you will hear about is one that's unfortunately a little confusing, but we would like to add some clarity to it, and that is that we are proposing to drop our wetland exemptions to a lower level. So right now, we don't regulate certain lower-functioning wetlands under 4,000 square feet. Other agencies do, but we don't. Department of Ecology said that is not best available science, and in fact, the science doesn't say that there's a certain size below which wetland functions aren't important. So we, they did provide guidance in the wetlands and CAO update publication called Guidance for Small Cities, and in that they have a strategy to deal with small wetlands, and we are following that strategy, and it has to do with a very small subset of wetlands that we now won't regulate. So instead of the 4,000 square feet, we're dropping it down to 1,000 square feet of isolated wetlands that will require to be mitigated but won't have buffers. The confusing part is when people heard, I think, that there weren't be buffers on these wetlands. And again, these were wetlands that weren't even regulated under the existing code, and we are following the guidance from Department of Ecology. They will be, in the next round of updates in the CAOs, they will provide some guidance on wetland buffers, but this time they were very explicit that they're not providing wetland buffer guidance. So we're not changing any wetland buffers. We are changing our exemption threshold, lowering it, and for those very small set of wetlands, they will not be required to have buffers. Mitigation will be required. And we feel that the new provisions are offering better protection, that they are based on best available science, and that they offer better clarity to the applicants and to the public, and we have consistently heard from Department of Ecology that the city of Bellingham has a good CAO. So we look forward to implementing it.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Questions? Michael?
Thanks for that presentation of those issues. There's something that came up a couple of years ago, and I'd like to bring it up again. It has to do with the essential public facilities exemption. And in the CAO, we provide exemptions for essential public facilities. I have two questions. One is, under state law, when they describe essential public facilities, they list airports, state education facilities, regional transportation facilities, regional transit authorities, correctional facilities, prisons, jails, solid waste handling facilities, things such as that. However, our CAO lists things like parks and trails. Most of the things that we list are actually parks and trails. So I'd like to kind of ask, why are we including parks and trails as exempted public facilities? And then I also want to ask, part two, this exemption seems like it's kind of a pretty strict exemption. They're exempt from the permit, but it's still held to a couple of requirements. How similar is the exemption to, if it weren't exempt?
In 2005, when we adopted this code, those facilities that you mentioned, the parks and some public works facilities, were listed and adopted by the council as essential public facilities. The new proposal doesn't eliminate those because they were already adopted, but it takes the essential public facilities out of the exemption section, and it has its own section now. And we've also renamed the exemption section to minor critical area permits. So we kind of teased it out a little bit. They still have the same criteria to meet, which is that everything has to be based on best available science. So the criteria are the same, and we are not adding any new essential public facilities to that list unless it comes up during the public process.
So like I said, these new, sorry, minor public, whatever.
Minor critical area permits.
Minor critical areas. So they're held to certain standards, including no net loss, using best available science, no practical alternatives, no more exemptions unnecessary. Those seem like pretty nice and strict requirements. Are they, how do they compare to if there was no special section? Are they a little bit looser? Are they almost the same? Are they tougher? What are they?
Right. Good question. In our practice, we haven't really seen any difference, really, because every project that we've worked on this in that list has also required state and federal permits. And so the standards really haven't been any different. What it, an example would be the Post Point wastewater treatment plant, which is an essential public facility. The new clarifier couldn't provide the full wetland buffer for that. It had to be located there. We were able to permit it. They still had mitigation. They still had to go through mitigation sequencing. They still were able to get permits from other agencies, but they were able to do it even though it didn't meet that standard because it's an essential public facility. So that's kind of how it worked. That's an example of how it worked. Does that answer your question?
Not quite, no. Are you saying that because many of these projects are held to federal standards, that sort of backstops the requirements?
I don't know that I'd say it that way, but most of the, well, the projects are going to involve some kind of aquatic resource because they're in the CAO. So that automatically involves other agencies, the Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Ecology, other agencies. They don't change their requirements just because it's our essential public facility. It's the same, they have to meet the same federal and state requirements.
I guess I'm just sensitive that we might give ourselves, for our parks and trails, a lower standard, and I don't want that to be the case. I want us to still hold ourselves to a high standard.
It is definitely still the same standard, and if you talk to them, they will tell you how costly the standard is, too.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, folks, to be talked about at a later date, right?
Okay.
Correct. Okay, we'll go on to our next item. Update on jail facility use agreement negotiations. Mayor Linville.
Brian, you want to come up? Brian's going to come up.
Y'all come.
In case there's questions.
Yes.
Safety and, yeah, sit close. I am, it is my understanding that you received the letter from Executive Louse back with a response to the red line that we had sent the county. Now, we haven't got a red line back from the county yet, and I don't think at this point in time we're going to get one. So these are his general comments as he read through the proposal that we had. The, I guess the need of the matter is if you get to the second page and you're looking at the 1/10 of a percent sales tax and the 21% share for the construction of the jail, and there's a list of 10 other points that would be acceptable to change, I mean, stuff with the demolition and other things in that list that would, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but would add up to about $10 million, maybe. But the biggest, the biggest chunks are using the 1/10 of a percent to lower everybody's cost, and we use 13-point-some percent of the jail. We're offering to pay 15%, and they still say that in order to make their funding plan work, that they need us to pay 21%, which isn't what we consider equitable for the use that we have, and future use, considering what might happen. For me, the other point of this is that while there's a lot of talk about the alternatives, Dan and I are sitting on the task force, we are a long ways from knowing even how many mentally ill people we have in the jail, which was kind of a little bit disappointing, because that's partially my focus, is what kind of inmates do we have, and is there a better place to have their treatment and consequences? But we don't know, and they're going to be bringing us back some more information about that, but we don't have that information now. And there's no guarantee that the sales tax will use any of that money, the way it's set up now, any of that money to pay for any of those alternatives. So we would still be coming up with other money to use and the kind of programs that we think might benefit us. So I guess I'd say, as long as the jail use agreement is tied to the money, and the council's already taken a position in opposition to that, or a majority of the council, then I think it would be up to you to decide if the 10 points that Jack put out there, and we can go through all of them, would be enough for you to decide to come out in favor of the funding package or the jail use agreement. We had a pretty frank discussion on Friday, and it appears pretty late for us to come forward with an agreement before the election, I would say, based on the points that are, continue to be in contention. I am continue to be hopeful that the county council will take the position that if this proposition passes, that Bellingham could still end up being a part of it in some way, shape, or form, if there's an agreement. If it fails, I'd like to see us start over. I get the indication from the county executive that neither one of those will be things that he would be running out and doing right away. So it would be, I guess, up to the council to say that, you know, give the direction as you would give direction to me if you wanted me to do something. So with that, I think that's about, that's about what the update is. Brian, Brian, or Peter, if they have anything to add, I think this might be a good time.
Okay. Anybody up here want to say anything? Terry, you want to say something?
Yeah. One, I want to applaud Rudd Brown for coming forward with his resolution asking the executive to negotiate with us and try to reach some agreement, even past the point. I have to say, if that would have been the city council that voted on that resolution, and the mayor would have responded, as Jack would have responded, I would have taken it as a personal affront to strip away all the major items of negotiation and leave us with almost nothing that he would agree to and willing to negotiate. You know, he shut off negotiation as far as I'm concerned, you know, totally. And so, you know, that's where I stand with it. I mean, this is kind of an affront. There's not one of the major points that we threw up. Well, there are a couple small ones that are out there, but on the major ones, you know, no, you have to agree first that we can't negotiate on any of these, and then I'll sit down and talk with you on the minor ones. To me, that's total nonstarter. There's no way I can support what they are bringing forward now. And, you know, I'm just speaking for myself, but there's no way that I'm going to support it. I would be willing to put ours back out when this fails at the ballot box, because, you know, this is not a good deal what he's throwing out for the citizens of Bellingham. You know, I mean, just the percentages from, you know, we were actually agreeing to go from 13%, which is our use, to 15. Okay, we'll pay a little bit more, but he's saying, no, we got to start at 21%. What? What kind of deal is this for Bellingham? This is terrible. The citizens of Bellingham will be taxed doubly again, and we don't have agreements on it, so it's a total no-go for me. That's what my feelings are.
Okay. Anybody else? Dan?
I wouldn't even characterize these as negotiations. These seem more like demands at this point, and I think Terry hit it on the head that we had offered to go above and beyond the 13.44% for the bed usage, which is, which is an average of several years, and it has been lower than that. So to come back with the 21 is just, it's too much. I think what's happening here is that perhaps the county might be conflating bookings with bed days, and those are two separate items. It's apples and oranges. So my position has not changed at all.
Okay. Okay, let me just say that, you know, I want to thank everybody for trying. We've tried. We've gone to the wall all the way with this. I think it's just time to sit back, let the voters decide, and see what happens afterwards. That's all we can do. I think we've talked about it enough. We've had it on our agenda every meeting since April, so I think it's time just to sit back and see what happens. So thank you very much for the update, and if there's any other further updates, don't hesitate to call.
I'm not assuming there's going to be another update before, before the election. I guess I'd just like to say that there is a solution to this problem, and I hope that we can get to it at some point in time.
Terry?
One more. I do think the proposal that you did send to the mayor will be a great starting point after the election to take to the small cities, because they will probably like some of these as well, and to try to get an agreement for a starting point to do a new agreement.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your input, Brian and Brian. That was really good. Silence is golden sometimes, believe me. Okay, now, a resolution regarding proposed Waukam County charter amendments. We had the meeting last Monday night. It was well-attended. I think it was a very good evening. We got to listen to a lot of opinions, so I will open it up and ask what are the wishes of the council at this time on what we heard last Monday night. Anybody? Dan? I mean, Michael and Dan?
These propositions are likely, if passed or if failed, to have very serious repercussions on the political rights of the people in Bellingham. In particular, I see some of them as downright anti-democratic and downright aimed at removing the equality of voting of citizens throughout the county. I'm speaking particularly on propositions one, two, and three. I heard the testimony supposedly in favor of those propositions. I found it unconvincing, sometimes contradictory, frankly, where, you know, it just seemed like what was good for the goose wasn't good for the gander, and that made no sense to me. So because these directly affect the political rights and the voice of the people of Bellingham, I think it's bad for the people I represent. I think it's bad for the people that we as a city need to represent. It reduces the voice of our people, and so I think I would support the city council taking a negative position on those three propositions.
That motion?
Well, this ordinance has four sections to it. At this moment, I would just move that on sections one, two, and three of the resolution, that we urge the voters to vote no on propositions one, two, and three.
Second. Okay, most of the main executive. Terry?
Yeah, and I will support that because this is different than the other as well, and I do think this is directed a whole lot at voters in Bellingham, and it is harmful to the voting rights and others in Bellingham with this, so I will, I will vote for that to-
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Jack?
I guess, what, Michael, what's your reasons for not wanting to discuss proposition nine?
Oh, I think we should discuss it. I think I just want to take one, two, and three, and we could just move to amend and then do whatever on separate four. I just wanted to separate the discussion of those two issues.
Four, I just wanted to separate the discussion of those two issues. I think they should go forward in the same resolution in the end. I'm just taking it piece by piece.
So you're not actually, you're just talking about a yes or no on one, two, and three, but not necessarily putting it into a resolution form at this point. Got it.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Now, what, is there anything? Roxanne, excuse me.
Well, I'd just like to make a motion that we support Proposition Nine.
A second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Terry?
Yeah, this one I feel a little bit different on than, than the others. I'm not against this, but part of my reason why I voted no on the others is I'm not so sure that the system is broken. It seems to have worked. I've sat and watched with the three where the, the, the control of, of the Wacom County, you know, has gone back and forth with conservatives in power, with more moderate people in power, where we've had a real mix. And I haven't, it seems to be, it seems to work in terms of the voters deciding at different times who to put in and who to vote, vote out. I think maybe the five would work fine, but I don't know. I don't know if that would be an improvement or not. So I'm probably going to abstain on voting on this one because I don't think it's a bad thing, but I'm not sure if it will be all that much, if it'll be any better than, than what's there. This, what they have seems to be working, and I think the five grew out of the idea that, well, if you want to make a change, you know, so badly, we'll, we'll throw out an idea. So, so I'm probably going to abstain on this one, voting for it, because I don't, I don't see where that system is all that broken with three. And it seems to work. It allows voters to go back and forth. It allows everyone to vote in the county on the areas, so that's where I feel.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I mean, I've seen the last six election cycles, and some of them have gone one way, some have gone the other. I think the biggest thing is, instead of try to rewrite all the rules and everything like one, two, and three did, which was absolutely way off base, we've had this district only battled for years, and we voted it, I think, I don't know how many times we voted, how many times it's been brought back up. But it all comes down to who's running for office. I mean, if you win an election, you win an election. If you don't, you don't. You come back and try it again, or you don't. I mean, this business about conservative, moderate, liberal, and all that stuff, I think most of it is 99% perception in who is running for office. That's what I, I think the citizens of Wacom County can see through all the political stuff and put on there who they want on there. I, I think it's obvious what they've done the last few years. You know, people have been defeated that have been in office, and other people have come along and won races, so I, I think it works great the way it is. I really do. I applaud Tim and everybody else for trying to come up with something to appease the other side or tell the other side that this is what should be done, but, boy, I think it works fine, and it's all about winning elections, folks, and if you don't, you come back and try again. Jack?
One thing that hasn't been discussed that I haven't heard about Proposition Nine and going to five, five districts is, is the port of Bellingham. And listening to the candidate forums, both of the, the candidates for the race for District Three are, are, both of them have indicated their full support for having five commissioners. And that's, that's really the broken system that we have in the county is three, three port commissioners. And if they choose to go five, I mean, right now, the, the three district commissioners that they have are associated with the county council district lines. By having five port commissioners, how are they going to draw those, those lines? Well, it could be as a result of the passage of Proposition Nine, which would make things, you know, very simple that way, but it would fix, oddly enough, it would fix a different government entity than, than the county council.
Terry?
But part of that, Jack, I see is it's not the three districts that's wrong, it's the three members. The county, by having seven members, by having two from each of those districts, and in at large, it, it expands that numbers. The port with the three districts could very well do the same thing with, with the current, current system. And so it's, it's not the, the system of three districts that's needs correcting necessarily. It's, if you're looking at that other entity, it's having three people where they can't, where you can, where two people talking together can decide everything. And so, you know, but, but I do understand why the port would be great to have five people or, or seven people.
Okay, Michael?
One, just to understand the motion. The motion would be to add another section to the same resolution.
Yes.
Okay. I also feel differently about this. Personally, having looked at it, I think there are enormous advantages to Proposition Nine. I think not only does it strengthen and clarify the voice of Bellingham voters, it strengthens, clarifies the votes of people who don't live in Bellingham, who live in the rural areas, the farming areas, the coastal areas. But that said, this, whether you go with Proposition Nine, five districts, or keep the current three, doesn't seem to me directly harmful or beneficial to Bellingham in as clear a way that I feel that I need to, as a city council member, say, hey, as your representative, I need you to know something about this. I have an opinion on this. Personally, I'm in favor of Proposition Nine, but as a city council member, I don't think I want necessarily to make that judgment because it doesn't appear to directly affect the, the people of Bellingham in a way, the same way that one, two, and three did. I'm not going to abstain. I'm just going to vote no on this particular motion, but, you know, ask me in my personal life, and I'll tell you my opinion.
We're never worried about that, my friend. Okay, anybody else? All, all those in favor of the motion will say aye? Aye. Everybody raise their hand? One, two, three, four. All those opposed? No. No. Motion carries four to three, so we will report that tonight.
Yeah, I voted no. I voted no.
We voted.
Michael makes sense on voting no.
Yeah, Michael.
My, yeah.
Listen to Michael. Mr. Raffado?
Yeah, just for direction, do you want anything incorporating the discussion, or do you want the resolution to be just basically as-is with a choice for support or oppose? It'll be, do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, do I add in any whereas clauses trying to incorporate the discussion, or do you want it to be simply?
Well, the way I would report it out is that, so it's going to be one resolution with no on one, two, and three, and yes on nine, right? Right. Michael?
Well, actually, I kind of like Peter's suggestion. Might be nice to add a whereas that we said something about how we, you know, believe that these resolutions have direct, positive or negative impacts on the people of Bellingham, which is why we take this position, something like that.
So tonight, when I report this out, we voted on them separately here, but now they're both in the resolution, correct?
So my thought was, right now, you have a resolution that, that doesn't take a side one way or the other, and really, I would redraft it, present it, and I could quickly read the changes, because we really want to have it read into the record what the changes are from what's in the packet. So I could include a single whereas clause.
Right.
Clean up the language so it's clear, and then I would have that ready for tonight.
Okay. That sounds good. Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some approval of some minutes. We have the approval of the September 28th committee meeting minutes.
Move approval?
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Approval of October 5th special meeting for the public hearing of proposed charter amendments. Did you see those? You got it? You don't have, Michael?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries six, zero, one. One abstention. Now we have to go to the, the 14th of September's public work minutes. Marie, do you have, Marie needs to read the amended things that public works asked us to put in there. Go ahead, Marie.
Impacts to Sunset Pond Park from the Woodstock Intersection Improvement Project were discussed, detailing the project, areas of recreational property impacts, and measures taken to minimize the harm to recreational property. Information only.
Thank you. We need to vote on that.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Old or new business? Terry?
Yes. I don't know if everyone had a chance to see it, but in our, in our boxes was a, was a draft resolution and, and write-up regarding protection of the Korean War Children's Memorial in Big Rock, Big Rock Garden Park from, from George Drake. And there's a draft resolution in here that I would like to have put on our agenda for, for discussion and possible approval on November, on November 9th.
I'm trying to think, would that be on Parks and Rec or Committee of the Whole?
Probably Committee of the Whole.
Okay, I'll put it on Committee of the Whole, that's fine.
And, yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second. Has everybody had a chance to go through that? Okay.
Yeah, but, you know, for those that you, that aren't familiar with George Drake, George was an ex-professor up at Western. He was a city councilman. He's been, he started Big Rock Gardens. He has been very active in the arts community and other parts of the community. He's a Korean War veteran, combat veteran, doesn't like to talk a whole lot about his experiences on that part, but was very instrumental in working with the war orphans in Korea, and is kind of nationally recognized for his work in the monuments that are here and in, not only nationally here, but, you know, in Korea for his work regarding the soldiers that fought in the Korean War, but particularly those that worked to protect the orphans after the war and during that period. So I would like to, yeah.
All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else? Mayor Linville, you have anything for old and new business?
Save it for tonight.
Time's up. Okay, we will now go to executive session. The executive session has two items, potential litigation, approximately 10 minutes, potential property acquisition, probably 10 minutes. I should be back here by 10 to 3 to close the meeting.